Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Being 7:30 PM, I will call to order the Village Board meeting for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Roll call is taken. We do have one member that is excused. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three on the agenda. We do have a public hearing this evening, so the public hearing is for discussion of ordinance 24-10, resigning of parcel V3046, 500E004 for Jackson Development LLC. With that, I will open up the public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item number four on the agenda is Village citizen to comment on an agenda item. Anybody sign in? Okay. Item number five is the consent agenda with two items, 5A and 5B. Looking for a motion on that item?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, 5A, approval of minutes for the special village board meeting September 24th of 2024, and 5B, resolution 24-24. Resolution approving additional election officials for the 2024-2025 season.
We have a motion by Emmerich, second by Engelhardt. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Several items coming from Budget and Finance Committee, so item 6A is authorizing a transfer of police and fire impact fees to the debt service fee fund in the amount of And that did come from Budget and Finance with a recommendation to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve authorization, a transfer of police and fire impact fee funds to debt service fund in the amount of $157,765.67.
Second.
We have a motion by Wells, second by Kripke. Any further discussion on this item?
I have another question. What, I read the notes on this that it's gonna be transferred to separate funds. What's in those funds after this gets transferred out? Nothing?
The newly established separate fire and separate police accounts. We do review with our Budget Finance Committee. We are showing the fire impact fee at $113,980.18. And we are showing the police impact fee at $76,773.95. That was a supplemental packet item for today's Budget Finance Committee, Brian. So I don't know if you would have received that via email, but we'll have it in the packet after today's meeting.
So after this is transferred, this is what they're gonna have in their individual funds then? Or this is the money, this is including this money?
No, what we're hoping to transfer and close out is an account that's no longer Fed impact fee monies. It is a 2020, as of 12/31/23, the account has not had any new homes or new permits putting money into the account. We had a new impact fee study completed. And then as of 1/1/24 this year, those fees are now collected and retained in separate accounts. And so this is just closing out and really getting a documented process to do so.
Okay, so the numbers that you gave me is on the same thing?
Separate account.
The 113 and the 76, those are what's gonna be in there once this 156 is moved out, it's a different fund, obviously. There's three different ones. We're closing one out. We're gonna have two separate ones for the police and fire, right?
Yeah, we'll retain two separate accounts after today, but we're closing out the account and transferring those funds that are no longer.
You're closing out the old impact fee.
Darlene, you wanna take this?
Just to comment, Brian, we're closing the account. It's not going into those other two funds, the police and fire? It's going to the debt service. Okay.
For the building, I got right on, but the 113, 9s and the 76, those are what's in the funds now for those guys from the
And those will be continued to be used for impact fees. Yeah.
That's all. I just wanted to see if that was the same money or not that we were transferring, so.
And Brian, if I could just remind you to turn your mic on? Thank you.
Thank you. The only question I got, the amount that's written in the, on the agenda varies from the amount that were.
Yep. So when they did the agenda, it was an estimated amount, and today it was what actually is?
Actual.
Actual. Yep. Yep. Any other questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6B is change order number one, the Jackson Community Center Expansion Project. More construction in an increase of amount of $29,525. This did come from Budget and Finance with a recommendation to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one, Jackson Community Center Expansion Project for more construction increased by the amount of $29,525.
Second.
We have a motion by Wells, second by Kripke. Any discussion on this item? If done, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6C is change order number two for the community center with a decrease of $20,000. This also did come from Budget and Finance with a recommendation to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number two, Jackson Community Center Expansion Project for more construction decreased by the amount of $20,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Wells, second by Kripke. Any discussion on this item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6D, pay request number four, Jackson Community Center Expansion Project for More Construction Services LLC in amount of $919,545.15. Again, coming from Budget and Finance with recommendation to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay request number four for the Jackson Community Center project for more construction, the amount of $919,545.15.
Second.
We have a motion by Madder, second by Kripke. Any discussion on this item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6E, review of 2025 capital and operational plan. So this item did come from Budget and Finance with a recommendation to direct the staff to prepare a 2025 budget incorporating funding option B. So do we wanna discuss like we did at Budget and Finance?
I can certainly provide an intro. The memo before you addresses two separate pieces of direction staff have received in the financial management plan update process. The first direction received was that a iteration of the capital projects planned be provided to the board so we could identify what items we were either delaying or deleting when it came to tightening up what it is we're proposing as projects for next year. Some of those decisions that were made were also dependent upon the form of funding that projects would rely upon. For example, a project that was eligible for general obligation debt or general obligation notes may be able to proceed, whereas a project that was reliant solely upon cash could not, if there was not a form of revenue to provide for that project to go forward. Other examples of changes made that were discussed by the committee had to do with delaying a project if, in fact, there were other acquisitions in the same year that made sense to delay. For example, the heart monitor project was brought up at the committee level. And so that is really the crux of the capital projects review in that memo for the board. The secondary review has to do with the operational plan that has been piece by piece approved with smaller okays by the board. Those okays have to do with staffing changes in the next iteration of the budget. Those approvals, I would make the argument, are subject to the or conditioned upon a budget adoption and approval next year. But those positions and these capital projects all reached a crux in our conversation at the last meeting where the board was looking at what potential impact to a taxpayer all of these small decisions were going to lead to. At that time, based on the assessed value estimates we were working with, it was a 7.9% increase to a taxpayer in the village. And that number was a number the board wanted more information on, both in a way that demonstrated what a 5%, so a lower or lesser impact would be to a taxpayer, and in the opposite direction, what a 9% would be. So that way it acted as more of a three-optioned conversation for the board to revisit. However, after that conversation where we had a 7.9% impact using a balanced levy limit compliant budget, we understood that there was an absence of manufacturing values in our assessment and mill rate calcs. And that is a pretty large number to have removed from that calculation. When we plugged in a conservative number, 50 out of 70 million, we know equalized, we have 70 million as of this year. When we simply added 50 of that, we were actually recognizing a 3.28% increase and impact to a sample property tax bill. The board may remember, you have a couple exhibits to this discussion. The board may remember that 7.9% impact had an example increase of about $157, if I'm not mistaken. That number has since lessened significantly, closer to the tune of between $60 or $70 with a 3.28%. And so when I'm comparing where we left off as a board, where the committee has reviewed and where we're at with the board now, the recommendation was to consider that 5% opportunity and abate some debt for the purpose of then longer-term savings to the sample taxpayer. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you. Questions from the board, or discussion, I should say, or both?
Do I have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when we, when we were looking for the 5%, we were looking at having to go with like 7.7% if I'm not mistaken, and 5 was the target to get below. After putting the whole value in, we now find out we're gonna be at 3.19.
2.8, 3.28.
Okay, 3.28. And I don't, I don't see any reason to go back to the 5 if we can be at the 3.28. I understand the idea of putting some money aside for the truck, for example, if the truck becomes available. But the reality is we're, we have more occupancy permits going out all the time, okay? And the average home that's going up right now is probably in the, we have ours at the 320 to 420 area, but on the other areas, I believe you're probably looking more like 400,000 or 500,000 dollar homes. And if you look at what those would be taxed on an annual basis, maybe we don't need to put money aside right now because the construction continues to go on and the ballot continues to go through the bill, the village will have money without raising the levy rate.
The only, I'll make a couple comments on that. So with these new houses going up, there's always a minimum of a year lag before you would see that new assessed value fully on the tax rolls. So even a house that went up today and finished today, their assessment for 2020, that would affect our 2025 tax bill, that would still be on whatever was done on that property on 1/1/24. Am I correct, Colin?
Yeah, the tax value isn't realized until January 1st.
Right.
Following year.
Following year.
The houses, you know, at mid-phase in construction, there isn't any value that would be realized there from a tax basis.
Right.
Until the following year.
Yep. So there's always that big lag in there. And the other thing to me, I don't necessarily agree with not having any budget amount for capital improvement projects. That's, that's my, I've always said that capital project line limit is always the redheaded stepchild, and that's always what gets nipped at and tugged at when we're trying to balance a budget. And at some point, we are going to be facing some large borrows if we don't start budgeting some capital items. Those are my comments. Anybody else?
I'd like to know why the HVAC for the rec center wasn't put into the building cost. Replacing that, why couldn't that have been part of our borrow?
Of all of the units, and I wanna say, Cal, there's are 10 of them on the building?
We currently have nine units on the community center building, and we had three that we had been having some issues with. We kinda called them our problem children. Those were put into the project, so those three are being replaced. But the other units, we're still functioning fine. So when we were asked to put together this financial plan going out many years, that's when we staggered replacing the other units if needed. So that's an expense that won't happen if we're not having problems with those other remaining units. But we have money in the capital projects for when those units do fail, that we have that put aside. Doesn't mean we're automatically every year gonna replace a unit. But we wanted to have money set aside for that because that was one of the main things that the board had mentioned, that we need to keep up with this deferred maintenance. We can't keep pushing maintenance down the road. So we wanna have those funds in the budget for when those units fail.
And Brian, you said option B you wanted to go with, that 90, just say 100,000 in there is for the capital projects? Is that the 3.28 or 3.29, or is that higher than that?
5%?
That would be the 5, that's option B, that would be the 5%. So on this, if you have this sheet?
Yeah, I'm looking at that now.
Yep. So the column A, or option A, would be the 3.28, and then option B would be the 5%. So the only difference between those two columns is on the very top where you got the capital project of nothing in option A at the 3.28 and 99,605.17 at the 5%.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what Tim said, you know, last year we raised it, the taxes, the villages poured of it. You know, we didn't have to, we did, and you look at the economy, you look at everyone's hurting. I mean, 150 bucks to some people, is it much? Probably not. But to some people, that's keeping the gas on for another month, or water bill for three months. I mean, at some point, we gotta give somebody a break. And we look at the way the government's going and everything's, the cost of everything. I kind of agree. I agree, we need to be putting money away to get projects done. That's the way we've been doing stuff for the last five to 10 years instead of borrowing. But at some point, we gotta give people a break, and this might be a year, in my opinion, to do that, and hopefully we get government takes over, something different, and we start going in the right direction again as a whole country. But yeah, I kinda agree with what Tim said about just holding it at the 3.29, or 2.8, whoever it was.
So we wanna keep adding protective services to the tune of, between the two, and that's only for half a year. We're probably talking over $100,000 right there alone, which sucks up pretty much all of our net new construction increase that we can levy. And so we wanna keep adding, adding, adding. But then when it comes to increasing it by 5%, which I think, if you look at inflation, how we're even managing with a 5% increase, to me is quite impressive the way it is. I mean, we wanna add staff, and I know you're the first one that always votes in favor of that, but then when it comes time to fund it, then we want a nickel and dime.
I can justify adding a paramedic to save somebody's life, a police officer. So they have two people working, because most people don't know what the job entails. I can justify that. I can answer a constituents for that, when that, when that comes up for spending money on something like that. That I can do. I know we're gonna need another plow route coming up at some point and hire a DPW worker. I know that too. I mean, I'm looking down the road.
But Brian, none of those come for free.
Oh, no kidding?
So i-if you're increasing your services and your, and your, your employees, and if you say that the people are, would be in favor of, of having to pay more for those additional services and, and people, well then, here it is.
One thing to remember, you can hire as many people as you want, really create people that do the jobs, and if they don't have the equipment to use, they're basically almost useless. They gotta have equipment to work with. I mean, many years ago, the village decided they weren't gonna spend money on capital improvements, on equipment. And we were faced with the possibility that it actually happened, a 25% in budget increase because the trucks had fallen apart, the streets had fallen apart. And the debate was whether we have three years of eight or one year of 25. We did the one year of 25, fix it, and I determined that I thought that would never happen again. So I think the 5% is very doable.
I agree with the 5%. I don't wanna get to a point down the road where it all just keeps piling up and have to do a referendum or something to cover capital maintenance when it should be done now as we go along, even if it is a 5%.
The thing is, when you're, when you're adding equipment, one of the reasons you add equipment is because the village is growing. You have to because of that. It's not just age of this stuff, where it's out. One of the reasons they add the route isn't that a truck is being replaced as far as the route goes. You're adding a route because you have more work to do, again, more people to pay that bill. And what I said earlier, also those homes are opening up, and it may well be a year delayed. But at some point, we have to hit the point where the village is at a certain size, and the equipment level is at a certain size, and doesn't need to be increased unless something extraordinary happens. And our taxes are high enough to maintain the equipment right now, in most cases. We haven't shortchanged the Public Works Department for equipment since I've been on the board. If they ask for it, they get it. My, the fact of taking $99,000, $100,000 more out of the tax bill this year to put it on the side of deferred debt that later on we won't have to borrow money, we know we will borrow money later. So it's just, I, again, I don't see the need to put the money in the pot right now when we know if you need to raise the levy to get the roads taken care of, we will, okay? And there'll always be something that always has to come up. The taxes don't need to go up every year.
Could, with the, with the numbers, Jen, that we talked about, that we use that 50 million for the valuation for the color industrial, whatever we wanna use for the, if that number's higher, which we hope it's gonna be for the valuation for that, that number, that 3.28 would come down. So if we're gonna add in 100,000 of that, and that saves 5%, if you just wanna add 100,000 in the capital improvement fund, could you still do that and look at that number being less than 5%?
I'm almost
Because that valuation's gonna be more than $50 million.
I'm almost certain I'll be coming to you when it's time to have the budget hearing, which is after the last week of October, when we get this needed statement of assessed value. That statement of assessed value will finalize what that mill rate will end up being. And that impact to a taxpayer is going to be less. 3.28 and 5% is an extremely conservative and high estimate right now because we've, we've deflated assessed value a little bit.
So we could add that in there, or that could be in there and say 100, make it simple. And that number, that 3.28, could be that, or it could even be less than that because that evaluation, we're unlikely is gonna be, you're at a very conservative level with that number that we're using.
It's very likely both scenarios will come in to be a lower impact or a less of an increase to a sample taxpayer.
Then why do we have to make the decision tonight before we have the rest of the information?
Because of the purpose of workshopping next Tuesday, staff would like to know how to draft your budget to be considered. Your budget workshop will always happen before we have our final statement of assessed values. Otherwise, we would be working extremely quickly and trying to notice a budget meeting by Thanksgiving to adopt a budget. And so it is an unforgiving component to what we have to consider when it is trying to comply with our deadline to report to the state what our tax rate will be for next year and notice a budget hearing properly. I want to say it's 21 days, Darlene, that we have to put it in the paper. And the date we put it in the paper, probably six or seven days after that, that's when we get our final statement of assessed value. I guess I've answered your question, Trustee Engelhardt, that we have to do a little bit of an educated guess. Last year, we were able to come dead on, but it also wasn't a reevaluation year last year.
So just looking at numbers too, I mean, we had nothing in there, and we were at 7.9. And now we put 50 million in there, and it went to 3.28. So I mean, even if you don't get the full 70, let's say you get 60 versus 70, you're probably still looking at, I don't know, the high ones, round two, would be my guess.
Be the percent of the village?
Yeah. If you add 10 million onto that
Value.
Value. And then your 5 would probably be 3.5 to 4? Ish?
I guess that would be my, would be my next question that comes up to mind, is if 3.28 goes down, does the 5% go down, or does the 5% stay, based on how we're, how we're discussing now?
They both lower.
They both lower.
And I'm, and I'm certain we've picked, again, conservative numbers to talk about because we wouldn't wanna have this conversation and have it be worse, meaning a bigger increase to your sample taxpayer. So we just wanna know where the threshold really lies with our board and what you're comfortable with authorizing.
The other thing I was gonna comment on too is this, the capital management plan that we're going into, I guess I think of that as a little longer-term thinking, kind of like coming to Kelly's thinking of, hey, we gotta have money so that we can set the things aside so we have funds when those projects come up, when they, when they have to be done. But like what we're doing now is basically budgeting so we can buy something today. And that doesn't seem like it's very long-term thinking. It just seems like tax and spend. To me, we're gonna, we're gonna increase the tax levy so that we can buy something else. And that doesn't seem very long-term to me, although I appreciate the fact that it's, it's going to offset the, the general obligation debt, which is, is a positive for me. It's gonna offset what's happening in the future. But if we continue to do that, all we're doing is just taxing and spending, taxing and spending. We aren't ever planning for what's gonna happen when the, you know, when the deferred maintenance comes up, when those, those HVAC units need to be replaced three years from now, five years from now, or whenever they fail.
We're the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but where the planning comes in is when Ellers looks at those capital big items, they're planning out for that 26, 27, 28, 29, whatever. They're, they're making it fit into our budget to, we may not be, we may not have the money to pay cash for it at that time, but the plan is putting it into, into motion that when we need those things, we have the capacity to work it into our budget. So they're, they are still looking, you know, the five years out. It's just a matter of, you know, we obviously don't, we, we don't levy for everything capital projects because we can't. Am I correct or wrong?
Yeah, the, the opportunity to be able to Yeah, the opportunity to be able to adopt annual budgets with increases that absorb both your immediate operational needs and your long-term sort of full replacement schedule of your assets. That time was certainly well ahead of when I've come to the village. I think it may have preceded some other elected officials here, that there aren't many communities that are able to, on a cash basis and a year-to-year budgetary basis, cover all of those needs. And so then it does become a prioritization where you're now placing more of what you need next year in your budget and less of what offsets. We're trying to have a blended approach, though. I will confirm that. Between cash and general obligation and that forward-looking plan, so you can see how they fold into one another.
Thank you.
One more question. So if we say, okay, budget based on the 3.28, okay? The number comes in and, oh, look at this, we can do this at the 3.28, or we can, then we'll have money left over, okay? We'll be able to do exactly what we want to do right now. Is there any reason when we actually do make the final adjustment after Thanksgiving, that's what it is? We can't make whatever the adjustment is right now with the target of not raising it at this point. In other words, budget for the, if you know, as Brian said, we can always add 100,000 into the capital budget if we want at that point as well as now. But if we plan a budget accordingly, to not have 100,000 in there, and hopefully things do work out to the positive when we get to the actual meeting to make the final decision.
Final tax impact will not be understood until the budget hearing. We're simply providing the opportunity to discuss now instead of while we're workshopping and looking at every operational budget. So this was the space to have the singular capital projects. Operational changes are obviously in this memo. But staffer really looking for, is the board looking for the leanest number possible? Or is the board open to having a little bit of money set aside to offset some of those general obligation projects? And that is, I would say, the simplest way I could ask and yield back to you all.
I don't know if you said, is there any reason why we, while we're waiting so long to get those numbers from them for the evaluations for the, or reevaluations from the industrial, I guess, base, whatever you want to call it?
This timeline is the timeline we've always been given by the Department of Revenue. The difference is you, as a board, are now very, very, very strategic in that impact to your sample taxpayer, where you don't know that final number until you're virtually in your budget hearing. In past iterations, I'm not familiar with a board being so detailed in your level of attentiveness to this. So the benefit is you're aware of what's happening. The con is some of it has to be projected impacts without actual known until we're at our budget hearing.
So if we, you're just looking for direction tonight? So if we say to keep the, say 100 in there for that capital, and I look at capital projects as our roads, that's what I look at. Trucks are all budgeted in different, I just look at like our road price. We need to keep our, up on our streets, that's obvious, and our infrastructure. So if we would do something like that and say, put your budget together with that 100,000 in there, let's use that number. And then when it comes next week or whenever you get your numbers, we meet again. And if we don't, if the number is not tweaked enough, we can always change that at that time. You're just looking for direction. Now we're not making a decision on what the budget's going to be.
Correct, correct. Yep, so what Jen's looking for is either proceed with working on a budget with option A or option B. So A would not have any capital projects in it. B would have the, call it 100 grand in there for capital projects. That's what she's looking for tonight.
And if, at that time, when we can't get these numbers back, and if it doesn't go where some of us feel where it's not, then we can cut that number down to where it would work, or take it out, or leave it if it's at that time, right? Is that?
Yes. Yeah, we're not finalizing any kind of budget or anything here tonight. Just looking for a recommendation as to what they, what we are directing them to kind of proceed with.
One last question, and not to beat a horse to death. Brian, what are they telling you as far as if they were able to schedule a truck to be built? What are they telling you as far as delivery?
I haven't heard yet. I'm hoping by the end of the month, by the Board of Public Works meeting, I would have an answer if we. So there's 130 international trucks. There's a rumor that we heard that they have ordered, and we're on the list. We got to figure out, you know, how high on the list if we're going to get that truck. And the truck would just be the chassis.
Right.
And then we'd pay for that, and then it goes to Burke, and then that takes like six months.
At least.
Seven, yeah, seven months to build. And then hopefully we put the truck in production in 2026.
Brian, what percentage of the truck cost is the 99,605 that we're talking about adding in?
About half.
It's a great question. I think where the last was, the chassis was 136,000 or something. They keep, and that's what we want to verify too. What, because we had specified the truck, sent it in. Remember, that was probably last year when you agreed to that, to get onto the list. And now we're going to tweak that number or see where it's, you know, inflation and everything else and where that number is at. So that's why I'm hoping to confirm by the end of this month or early November.
So this might be around half of the total cost ultimately? Is that about right?
We have 260 right now as a rounded number to include both the truck and the chassis.
The thing you might see going with the chassis also, not the equipment. The equipment is still expensive as it can be. But the chassis, it's a much more competitive market than what it was three years ago right now, even though you still can't get whatever you want when you want it. So it's kind of going like this. So we could end up with a better price on the chassis than what we thought at this point.
Anecdotally, I can also add, within this memo, there's a comprehensive list of what we're proposing for next year. I do want to add that the case can be made to remove the water utility proposed items. One's been purchased and one does not need to be any longer paired with a TID-7 item. That final lift for Spruce Street and Ridgeway Drive is really reliant upon movement on both Village Square and the Oaks of Jackson. So while you have a pretty long list here, not all of them are actually reliant upon, one, this general fund capital project sample that I know is included in the packet. And then at the budget workshop, you'll see some numbers tweaked that reflect those two things I've just updated you on as well.
All right. Anybody willing to formulate some sort of a motion, either Plan A or Plan B?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare 2025 budget incorporating funding with option B.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wells, second by Emmerich, to proceed with Plan B. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6F, pay request number seven for the wastewater treatment plant tertiary filters and disinfection project, J. H. Hessinger in an amount of $336,300. Came from Board of Public Works and Budget and Finance with recommendations to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve pay request number seven, wastewater treatment plant tertiary filters and disinfection project for J. H. Hessinger in the amount of $336,300.
Second.
We have a motion by Wells, second by Engelhardt. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6G, 2024 wastewater treatment plant project clean water fund loan request number five in amount of $349,541.50. Also coming from Board of Public Works and Budget and Finance with recommendations to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the clean water loan fund request number five for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $349,541.50.
Second.
We have a motion by Madder, second by Wells. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6H, review of quotes for the Hickory Park path reconstruction project. This did come from Board of Public Works and Budget and Finance with a recommendation to approve. And we are looking to approve the amount.
Not to exceed.
Do you have it, Tracy?
Not to exceed $168,847.
And that would be pro to pave.
Wasn't pro to pave, but then there was some extra dollars for, we were doing some other work on the path as well?
Correct. It's for the do not exceed.
Yeah, it's a do not exceed.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to approve the quote from Pro to Pave in amount not to exceed $168,847.
Second.
We have a motion by Heckendorf, second by Engelhardt. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven on the agenda is Plan Commission. We only have one item coming from Plan Commission tonight is Ordinance 24-10, rezoning of parcel V3046500E004 for Jackson Development LLC. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of this item. I will make a motion to approve Ordinance 24-10.
Second.
We have a motion by Heckendorf, second by Kripke. Any further discussion on this item? If none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I would make a motion to suspend the rules for the second reading of Ordinance 24-10.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Heckendorf, second by Emmerich, to suspend the rules. And a roll call vote, please.
President Heckendorf?
Aye.
Trustee Emmerich?
Aye.
Trustee Engelhardt?
Aye.
Trustee Madder?
Aye.
Trustee Kripke?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, I will make a motion to approve Ordinance 24-10 in the second reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Heckendorf, second by Emmerich. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, West Bend School District. Tracy?
The last open house for the West Bend Schools Facilities referendum is on Monday, the 14th, at Jackson Elementary School from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So if anyone is interested in getting more information about what the referendum is all about, feel free to attend.
Thank you. Item number nine, Washington County Board Report. We did receive an email from Supervisor Schwab. Some of the things that the county board is tackling this month is they are looking at a 2024 resolution and authorizing the county of, sharing of county IT services with the town of Aaron. So I know we had, we were going to be monitoring that over the course of the next, our contract period two here. So another municipality is going into the county system. Resolution 29 rescinds their existing appointment of the Waukesha County Medical Examiner in which the, Waukesha's ME served as Washington County's ME. And in an effort to increase efficiencies, the county is reworking its contract with Waukesha County in which Washington County staff will serve as our medical examiner with assistance from Waukesha County staff on an as-needed basis. Resolution 30 is a resolution which would approve a hazardous mitigation plan that was prepared by Sewer PAC. The draft plan was submitted to Wisconsin Emergency Management and FEMA on June 24th. And on August 13th, we received news that the draft had received preliminary approval. If approved by the Washington County Board, the hazard mitigation plan will be forwarded to all cities, villages, and townships in accounting for their approval. Resolution 31 is the approval of minor land easements and sales to the Wisconsin DOT for pedestrian crossings enhancements along Highway 33. And Resolution 32 would approve making a grant application for the purpose of furthering the next generation 911 system. And Resolution 33 would approve up to $3,000 for the installation of surveillance cameras at ballot box, at ballot drop box locations to help ensure the integrity of Washington County election results coming up. And that is what I had from Mr. Schwab for the County Board Report. Greater Jackson Business Alliance.
I got a couple of items from President Zinnert. She just wanted us to know that they are planning their November member social. If you're a member, please plan to attend sometime along the way as soon as you hear the details. And also, the Hallelujah Road Opening Business Bash in Jackson was a success. They had 19 businesses participated and they report that they had a number of attendees visiting our businesses in Jackson, and also that they got a grant of, for 100% of the cost from Washington County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11 is the Mid-Merin Municipal Association Report. Don is not able to be here tonight, but he did put an email together. He states that the Mid-Merin Municipal Association held their dinner meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, hosted by Hartford. The speaker was Circuit Court Judge Brad Schimmel. Judge Schimmel is the former Wisconsin Attorney General and is currently running for a seat on the Wisconsin State Supreme Court. He discussed current issues concerning the state judicial system as well as his reasons for running for the State Supreme Court. Additionally, we covered annual information regarding 2024 summary and the 2025 budget and discussed potential topics for the 2025 legislative meetings. The next legislative committee meeting will be Wednesday, January 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in Jackson. And the topic is to be determined. And the next dinner meeting is January 22nd, 2025, hosted by the City of West Bend. And the venue and speaker are also to be determined. That is the Mid-Merin Association Report. Item number 12, looking for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Kripke, second by Emmerich.
Come on.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.